It's just seven o'clock. I think we're ready. Good evening, and I want to welcome everybody to the June meeting of the Milton Town Planning Board. Mr. Chairman, would you please call, roll call, or attend to the board? And we'll note that I got a call or email from Pat Collins. He's not able to attend. Go ahead, call attendance. You're on mute. Tina, you're on mute.
John, he's working on it.
Can you hear me out?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Mercantile?
Here.
Ms. Bigelow?
Here.
Mr. Collins? Oh, Mr. Collins, this is an attendant. Ms. Bandinga?
Yeah.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Here.
Chipper Burkeville?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you. We have a quorum, so we'll begin the meeting. I'd like to start this evening with a put some flag. Bill, I don't know if you can put that up, but yes, thank you. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the states of America.
Republic of which stands one nation, the God of this world.
Justice, freedom, and justice for all. Thank you. I'd also like to note that we have in attendance our counsel, Bill Carey, our engineer, Joel Biaki, and the director of planning and codes, Bill Lewis. We'll all be participating in this evening, and we have a number of, what are referred to as panelists on Zoom that represent the applicants that we'll get to as we go. In terms of agenda item two, my announcements. I just want to mention again, this is our second meeting under Zoom. Since the coronavirus has prevented us from meeting in person. Again, bear with us. We've got a lot of clunky ways of operating this and trying to make sure everybody gets a chance to speak. But we have a lot of opportunity for the public to interface with us this evening. And I'd ask them, if you are Zooming, if you want to make a comment, please use the hand wave feature that's down below in your more button or on the Q and A feature. You can submit your name and the intent that you want to make a comment. And Amanda and Tina are watching those, and we'll be sure to try to accommodate this. If you're phoning in this evening, which I don't see any phone calls right now, would you have any interest in doing a comment? I'd ask that you text Bill Lewis. He'll give you his cell phone number. That is 518-376-1831. Again, that's 518-376-1831. And he will, if you send your name and you're interested in making a comment, he'll make sure to stop us and ensure that we give you ample opportunity to make a comment.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
That phone is temporarily out of service. I'll give you another number.
Go ahead and state that, please.
Area code 518-209-4396. Again, area code 518-209-4396.
And you can text that in at any time, and when we hit the appropriate place, we will make reference to that. As with our usual comment protocol, we request that you announce yourself, your address, and then present your comments. You have a limited of three minutes or less. We want to accommodate as much as we possibly can. So thank you for your patience as we work through all of this. We continue this evening to have Nancy Pedula serving as an alternate member. On behalf of Marco Biaco in his absence, I note that Pat Collins was not able to make this evening's meeting. So he's not present here. And an executive order that enables us to meet via Zoom, conference call, whatever, have been extended until later this month. We may well see a change in this so that in July, maybe doing some form of a quasi-in-person meeting at town hall. Probably still broadcasting. But I'd ask the public and the board members to really keep an eye on what the town puts out over the next few weeks as we try to work through getting back to some normal, some semblance of normal meeting together in one space. That's all the announcements I have. Does any board member have an announcement they want to make at this point? If not, our third item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for May 20th, 2020. Everybody should have gotten a copy of the minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the May 20, 2020 minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I assume we approve the minutes of May 20th, 2020.
Motion accepted?
Yes, I'll second that.
Any discussion changes, comments on the minutes? If not, Tina, pull the board. I'm here, Tina.
Mr. Mercantile?
Yes.
Ms. Pedula?
Yes.
Ms. Bandinga?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Aaron Burkeville?
Yes.
The next agenda item will go to general public comment. We'll open the meeting for the public to speak. Please note that we do have a public hearing this evening on the Belmonte Site Plan and Special Use Permit. So if you have comments on that project, please wait until we open the hearing so your comments can be on the record. But again, I'd ask that if you're Zooming with us and want to make a comment, use the hand wave feature or submit something in the Q and A. I don't see anything cropped up there. And if you've dialed in, please text Bill Lewis at 518-209-4396. Is there anybody that would like to make a comment before the board at this point? I'm not seeing any public comments at this time. We have quite a few attendees up there. I don't know. Okay, I'm not seeing any opportunity at this time. Morgan Jackson?
Hello?
Hello? Is anyone there?
Yes. Yes, thank you, John. Got a quick question now. I'm newer to the town of Milton government and just curious, are we going to be able to get a full plan of what the Belmonte plan is before we comment on it during public session? Because I know it's been going back and forth for six to eight months, just trying to figure out what the current ask is for the Belmonte property.
Yes, we will go over that ask. And I know Mr. Tewey is going to do a presentation on behalf of the Belmontes and what they're going to do. And on our website, for the last couple of weeks, we've had all the documents that relate to this project.
Yeah, no, I read all those, and they actually, they weren't available until two days ago, and I actually phoned.
There were some problems getting documents continuously posted on our website.
Okay, perfect. And then were you going to notify the properties that were around the town, the Belmonte property via mail like you've done with other public hearings based on this?
We did that originally when the project was submitted.
Correct, yeah.
We do it every time there's a public hearing.
Okay.
It's very up to you to monitor the town website and the public notices that are out there.
Beautiful.
Yes, public notice was filed and printed in the paper.
Okay.
On the website for a couple of hearings at times.
I appreciate the info. Thank you, John.
No, thank you. And if anybody else that'd like to make a comment at this point? I don't see anybody else that's raised their hand. Go check. All right. Okay, we're beyond seven over nine of p.m. This evening, we'll continue our review of the Belmonte application for a special use permit, including a site plan review for a home occupation two in association with the tent rental business in their accessory pool yard. Last month, we had a few questions and comments regarding the site plan. Our engineer, Joel Biaki, had requested to review the stormwater plans. That's been ongoing. The board has before it nineteen. Actually, we're up to twenty pieces of correspondence or information that are there. I'm just coming over.
John, we have Nancy Schultz. She would like to speak. She's on the phone right now, but if you could, she wanted to speak to the public comment.
Okay, Nancy Schultz. Can you, let her bring this to me. She's on the phone. I don't see her phone. Hold on.
She is a attendee.
Yep. Nancy, are you there?
Unmute her.
Nancy, unmute her. Nancy, shoulder up to here.
Can you hear me? I can't hear you.
Okay.
I can't hear you. I can't hear you.
You have a lot of background, John.
Yeah, what's your name, John?
All right, Nancy, can you hear us?
We can hear you.
All right. Did you have a public comment, or did you want to make a specific comment to the Belmonte property?
I just wanted to make a statement for the public comment for the Belmonte.
Okay, we have not, we're just opening, we're going to open that hearing. We have not opened it yet.
Okay.
So if you want to, I'll look at you for a minute, then we'll get you on in a couple of minutes. Okay?
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so moving forward, there were twenty pieces of information that were posted on the website up there regarding the site plan review, all the correspondence that's been received from the applicant on us. We, a few days ago, posted every comment received since September of last year from the public eye, and some of those had some information to deal with at the events venue. I want to reiterate that November of 2019, the Belmontes pulled their application for the event venue and then just submitted for the tent rental business in their accessory part for home occupation two. So with that, I know that I'd like to just see if Joel Biaki or Bill Lewis have any comments to present to the board at this point right now.
Yeah, I'm Bill Lewis.
Yep.
At this time, in the last month, I've talked to the applicant's engineer and their legal counsel in regards to the slip information. That's about pretty much all I have on the planning side.
Okay. Joel, do you have anything to speak to right now?
Yeah, John, just to echo Bill's comments. We provided a comment letter to the applicant's engineer last Monday. And I think John, Romio, their consultant, knows what needs to be done. We've been in communication. I'm sure it'll be done in a timely manner. So from our standpoint, that's really the only thing that would be holding us up to prevent, you know, preventing from the application of any finalists.
Thank you, Joel. I believe that Mr. Tewey, you are going to start the presentation on the Belmonte project this evening.
Yes, Chair.
And I would just ask if you could try to keep your comments as brief as possible. We've got a lot of people on. I know they want, or anxious to speak up, so please go ahead and give us an overview. And I think Mr. Romio also wants to make a comment.
Okay, I can do that. I'm going to try to give you a full overview with regard to home occupation two in relation to this property and for the site plan review. So everybody's got the same information. If you have a copy of the code, we're going to go from section 180.5 definition of home occupation two, then to 180 point or dash three one, which is Home Occupations Supplemental Regulations. The Belmontes own the property at 804 Middle Line Road as their primary residence. The family's primary occupation is within the accessory building, and that is exactly what home occupation class two is allowed to be. The town of Milton on April 9, 2019 issued a building permit for the structure that has been constructed. I've got a copy of that here, and I know you've all seen it. But when the building inspector, who was also the code enforcement officer and the zoning enforcement officer, issued it, he issued it not just for home, but for storage building. So there was full knowledge within the town records as to what the use of this property was going to be. The home primarily is a residence. It's got five bedrooms, four full baths. There's barns with horses. There are horses grazing in the property this afternoon at noon. Paddocks, checkered coops. As a result, the eighteen acres that the Belmontes own are in fact used for permitted use within the zone within their, in which they are located, which is residential and farm. Special use permit is a use that is in fact permitted within this based on the approval of this planning board. The, this is a class two home occupancy. The standard, the business use of residential property shall be allowed of the business activity will can be compatible with the use within the district and assure the peace and harmony of the neighborhood. There are existing stables on the property. The neighborhood bought the building, and this was to end the record. One of the neighbors thought the building that was being constructed was an inside horse riding arena. As a result, the exterior of the building, based on that neighbor's comment, is consistent with the more rural nature of this part of the town. Directly across the street, which is Galway and Middle Line Road, there is a public stables. And if you look in the back, you can see a very large white structure, which is comparable in size to the building that is here. So that the utilization of the space for a relatively large building is consistent corner to corner. The inside material storage is exactly what the building permit allowed it to be. And storage within a farm operation structure, which farm operation is defined within your code, is one of the things that is allowed. There will be, home occupation shall be conducted in a manner which does not give the outward appearance of a business. There will be no advertising on this building. There will be a permitted sign that will be on Galway Road that'll direct vehicles up to the building. But there will be no advertising on the structure itself. There will be no noise or light pollution extended from this particular site. The light is going to be one off the north side and one very small light off of doorway on the south side, which is the Galway side of the property. The home occupation shall be limited to two, limited to two per dwelling. There will only be one home occupation on this property. And it will not interfere with the use and utilization of the property as a residence, nor will it interfere with the use and utilization of the property for farm purposes. The home occupation shall be conducted only by members of the family. There are five members of the Belmonte family, mom and dad, son, and two daughters. The son, mom, and dad are intimately involved with the tent business. The two daughters come on board during the peak season. The peak season would have been just about now for graduation purposes. The business falls off significantly later in the cold weather months. And as a result, this is a family operated business. There is 1.5 clerical staff members, and only one of them appears on the property at any particular time. The other one works remotely. And there are two drivers of the trucks now. The drivers of the trucks are not stationed permanently at this location. Their primary job is to load an individual truck and to take it to a location and then unload and begin to set up the tent and other party facilities at that location. So the utilization of this property for an excess number of people will not be a problem with regard to the rules that the town has created. Home occupation shall be no more than two residential assistance. We've talked about that. Home occupation shall provide off-street parking. The way the parking is set up on this building is the parking with regard to the loading and unloading of the truck will be exclusively on the north side of the building. That north side of the building allows it to be blocked from Galway Road and from the west, which is Middle Line Road. There are paddocks and there are tree lines that will significantly diminish the view of the trucks that are there. The south side of the building has a small door and very few, but some people want to see the materials that they are renting. The reason I say few is that primarily the utilization for these services is done online, and people order things online. So it is not a business that generates any level of traffic coming into and off of the property. It probably certainly generates less traffic than, for example, the stables that is across the street that have any number of horses and people visiting, horses, riding the horses, taking lessons on the horses, etc. So from a traffic point of view, it is not particularly hard. The only outside truck that will be going onto the property would be a truck that is used to take away the laundry. And it takes away the laundry once a week, and it delivers the laundry back once a week. Laundry, by that I mean tablecloths, napkins, things of that nature. We've seen some comments that says that there's a kitchen in this place. There is no kitchen in the facility. What there is is the ability to wash and dry the dishes and the glassware that is used in the, in the business. Limited signage on Galway Road. The Belmontes understand that their ability to have a sign is controlled by the town code. The town code says you can have a four-square-foot sign, and that's really all the signage that they need because they are not advertising this as a business. They're merely using it for the purpose for which the building permit was issued, as a storage facility. Home occupation shall be conducted either within the home or in outbuilding. The code is very unique in this situation. It has two distinct utilizations for home occupation. And very clearly allows a home occupation to be in a separate accessory building, and that's exactly what we are proposing to do. The traffic that will be generated off of the site, as indicated, will be minimal. The traffic on the site for public safety purposes is excellent because there are really two access portals to the building. The primary one is on Galway Road, but a secondary one for police or fire purposes on Middle Line Road, coming up right by the house and will cut into the back north side of the garage itself. The visualization for public traffic coming out on Galway, the primary route, that would be east and west. There is a clean line of sight going to the east and the west. And the intersection of Galway and Middle Line Road is controlled by a four-stop intersection. As a result, there are automatic design breaks in the traffic for this property. The home occupation will not create any offensive noises. The business of the business takes place off of the site. This is merely a storage facility. As a result, there is very little traffic noise on the particular property. There's no vibrations. There's no smoke. There's no electrical interference, no dust, odors, heat, or light. Again, there will be two small lights, one on the north side of the building and a smaller one on the south side of the building. There is nothing that is produced or sold outside of this building. Again, this is a storage building. Things are brought to the building for storage purposes, and they are removed from the building after they have been stored for a purpose of location and utilization on other people's property. There shall be permitted no sharing, letting, subletting of the property. This is not intended to be sublet. There are no parts of this that are going to be sublet. It is wholly to be utilized for the purpose that the Belmontes wish to put the building to as a home occupation two. No outdoors display of goods or goods stored on the property. We've talked about this before. There will be no outside storage of anything that could logically go into the barn. The only thing we have discussed, and this can be covered in site plan, is the propane will be outside on the north side of the property, and that will be shielded from public view, both primarily from Middle Line Road and partially from Galway Road upon site plan approval. Those are the criterion for home occupation two, and we believe that we comply with those. The other considerations have to do with special use permit. There are several standards that are within your code. The location and size and use of the nature and intensity of the operation involves the size and the site relation to the use, the location of the site with respect to existing in your future streets, providing access. So it talks about whether or not there is enough room on the site for this building. This building is eighteen acres of land. There's plenty enough room on this site for the building that the town gave the building permit for. It is also not inconsistent, as I've said before, with the building that is located to the southwest across the intersection of Galway and Middle Line Road. With regard to traffic onto or off of the site, there is a limited amount of traffic. And I dare say it is less than the traffic that would be active in a farm operation in which there is activity during the entire day as opposed to activity being pretty well limited to the morning hours and then the afternoon hours. Most of the traffic on this property ends at about three o'clock in the afternoon. The property or propriety of sidewalks or any integral components of the transportation infrastructure in the town center, that has nothing to do with this. The location, nature, and height of the building, walls, fences, the nature and intensity of the intended operation. The building, as I've said now three times, is not inconsistent with the building that is diagonally across the street. The more important part is the intensity of the use. The intensity of the use on this property is very low because the intensity of the business involves the trucks and the equipment and the tents being on some other physical location. So all of the intensity of the business is being removed from the Middle Line Road property. It is not centralized with regard to the Middle Line Road property. All proposed traffic accessways shall be adequate, but not excessive in number, but be adequate and with great alignment, be sufficient, separate from street intersections, and place public assembly and meet similar safety considerations. There is no public assembly in this area of the town. There's no sidewalk system. The real concern with that particular rule is whether or not truck traffic or vehicle traffic can get onto and off of the site in a safe fashion. And as I indicated, looking east and west on Galway Road, there is more than adequate line of sight to have that covered. And there is a natural break in traffic flow because of the four-way stop intersection at Galway and Middle Line Road. Adequate provision for safe and accessible parking and loading. There is plenty of room for this property to be loaded on the north side of the building. And there is a very limited number of people who would be visiting the site and want to see the tablecloths or the glassware or anything like that. There will be a parking area provided for them on the south side of the building and one access door. one access door for them to go into. But the number of people who will be utilizing this property for that purpose is the minimalist for the several reasons that people, uh, uh, shop online for much of this prod- project. Product. Um, uh, all off-street parking service areas shall be screened. Uh, that can address wholly, uh, in, uh, site plan re- review. We have intended, uh, to, uh, do, do that. Um, in, in any event, and it's part of what, um, is being designed with regard to the property. All proposed building structures and equipment materials shall be readily accessible for fire and police protection. Uh, police and fire protection can come to this building, uh, and certainly access three sides of the building from two independent road systems, one being the driveway that comes off of Middle Line Road and the second one, the primary driveway that comes off of Galway Road. Uh, there are no plans for a public address system, uh, lighting for outdoors. I've explained to you how limited that will be. Um, and so as a result, the, the, uh, uh, visual, nightlight, uh, visual, uh, noise visual, odor visual, um, uh, uh, and things of that nature that would escape the boundaries of the 18 acres is very limited. That's also benefited by the fact that this property is located, uh, on a two-lane, um, two- a road intersection. As a result, the, uh, distance from neighbors to the west and the distance from neighbors to the east are significant. The building is also built, um, so that it is in compliance with all of the setback requirements so that, uh, there is not that kind of interference with regard to the building. Um, based on what we've, uh, seen, based on how this building would be designed and very specifically because a home occupation can be, um, uh, uh, contoured so as to have it be part of what the business is. Uh, the nature of the business that the Belmontes want to run is in fact, uh, a very, has very limited outward impact on the area. Uh, again, I recall the comment that the building looks like it could be an indoor riding arena and there is nothing necessarily that will detract from that building, buildings you, uh, thought used because, uh, there will be no signage on the structure. Uh, I'd be more than glad to answer any questions. I tried to make that as fast as I could.
Thank you, Mr. Tuie. Uh, John Romeo, I know you wanted to address the, with respect to, uh, some of the things of the stormwater management plan. Do you have anything you want to say, Brad, to that?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Tuie. Thank you, members of the board. This is John Romeo, speaking from inside northeast. With regards to the site plan, I think Mr. Tuie, uh, laid out most of the generalities with the site. I wanted to just kind of touch base on some of the updates that we've provided. We have not yet submitted these to the board for review, but at the last meeting, there was a request to try to increase the screening for the project site. The project site as was provided, uh, during the last planning board meeting included 20 trees. The most recent iteration, which again has not been submitted to the board, but the most recent iteration includes 29 trees. So in addition of nine trees have been added primarily to screen the truck parking area as was requested by the board as well as to supplement the screening for the propane outdoor storage area. So additional nine trees have been provided, which we really believe that this is going to completely screen. You know, obviously as they mature, these trees, you know, will be planted and they will grow and they will screen the project site permanently. With regards to the stormwater management, it has only been a little over a week since we received the comment letter and the request for a SWIP. We are working on that with the applicant. Uh, we have to do some more work, obviously, to, to get that wrapped up. I wanted to just kind of talk through the generalities of what we're looking to include with that. The project site, uh, has right now a graded area from the building down, uh, through the parking area. What we've been looking to do is include on the south and southwest sides of the building, a combination of drainage swales, bottom retention and maybe a small dry or wet pond area to accommodate the grid infrastructure and the, uh, runoff production and the quantity controls mandated by New York State DC and accommodated during, with MJ Engineering's, uh, comment letter that we received last week. So through those methods, we're confident that we can control all of the stormwater on the project site and minimize it to that or below what was on the site before when it was just a vacant field. All of that water will be discharged onsite and it will be maintained. We will have separation from the onsite well and from the onsite septic. We don't anticipate any problems with that. We are looking to try to minimize the footprint of those items and minimize the maintenance requirements for the homeowners at the property, but all of that will be submitted in a timely manner as soon as we can to MJ Engineering for their review. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Uh, I noticed that Tony and Joe Belmonte are there. I don't know if they want to add anything in addition to this at this point or we'll all start to have a public hearing?
John?
Yep.
We do have two question and answers.
Okay. So we'll turn to that. Terry or Joe, do you have anything you want to add at this point or now? You're on mute.
I think, I think they've covered everything we can answer.
Excellent.
They need that.
Okay. So then I guess at this point, uh, we're ready to open, uh, public hearing for the Belmonte's special use permit and site plan review. Uh, so we'll do that. I know that Nancy Schulte's had a comment she wanted to make and I also know that, uh, Mr. Morgan had two questions up there. So Nancy, uh, I'll ask you on mute and if you have something you want to say at this point, the hearing is over.
Thank you. My next answer was on the 3652 Galway Road in which everybody says things like they can't see the building. I can see the building. I can see the building every single day at my front door. Um, and there's references being made to, uh, building to the southwest corner across from this large building. They are not the same at all. Um, I submitted pictures some time ago to the committee to show the difference between the two. One is very clearly a rounded structure hidden amongst the trees that is barely seen from the road. As you look at this structure on Belmonte property, it is gigantic. It is a big square building. It's obvious. It sits way up on the land and so everybody sees it when they drive by. It's not hidden in the trees. It's very obvious. And you know, one of the reasons why we particularly moved into this area was because we never thought we'd have to deal with a commercial business being done. And anyway you look at it, that's what this is. They're renting out a service and there's going to be people coming in otherwise they wouldn't build the parking lot. Um, yeah, yeah, there's lights on at night in the building. I can see them out my window. This building changed the, the essence of our neighborhood, which the zoning rules as I read them say that buildings like this should not interfere with the nature of the area, which it does clearly. Um, you know, um, sorry, I'm not as experienced as you are. It's okay. Take your time. But, um, it's just at the point in that when we came to look for this house, we did a windshield survey. We drove around for weeks and days looking for a, a place we wanted to live where we thought we would never have to deal with a big commercial building. And now that we are having this conversation and having this discussion about why this was allowed to be built in the first place, it is not a structure that looks and fits into the essence of this neighborhood and it does change the, what the area looks like. And if there's a special permit allowed for this one wants to say that another one can't come. It's now changing the whole area. The wildlife we used to see across the street in the field are no longer there and I'm sure that is related to all of this. So I sent two letters now, uh, there was another letter submitted yesterday and it had the signatures of 11 of the neighbors who are, also have the same kind of concerns is that there's a lot of things about this that just don't feel right to us who've been here a long time. Um, you know, the neighbors were not consulted about what they were intending to do and that just does not seem like a really good thing to do. And who moves into an area expecting to have to get a special permit to do what you wanted to on the land? Wouldn't you look into where you were moving and what you were building before you did that? This just seems like it's kind of backwards and it's really not fair to the people who have lived here for a long period of time. So I just wanted to remind everybody that we have settlers in the past. I did send a set of pictures that compares the two sites because the buildings are not at all alike, even though that reference keeps being made and they're not. Um, and just wanted to say that we're, we're just definitely not thinking that this is what fits into this zoning, these zoning rules. As I read them, and there's many areas here that there is a real conflict. You know, if you're, if you're now running a business, then why do you need a parking lot? Why do you need a sign if you're running a home business in your area? And this is an agricultural area. This is not an agricultural business. So I just wanted to put that stuff out there and make sure it was on the record that, uh, I am not alone with this. Um, it just so happens that I'm the neighbor that's available to speak tonight, but we have sent two letters and the letter that came to the, to the board yesterday has 11 signatures on it that I'm aware of. So just wanted to make sure that our voice is not lost in all this. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. I did want to just note that, uh, you spent a few weeks ago or actually the last month's meeting, you know, on the website as well as the whiteboard. Didn't quite depict the whiteboard, uh, is it as big as you had it, you know, and breaking up a little bit, but those photos are all out there and we do have the letter that received yesterday has been posted on with, with those signatures. So.
They made comments to Nancy's comments.
I'm sorry, what?
Can I make comments to Nancy's?
Absolutely.
Hi Nancy, this is Terry, your neighbor. Sorry we haven't met in person. Um, just to let you know, when we moved into this area, before we even purchased the house, we did talk to the town and we were mistakenly told that we did not need a permit, that it was an acceptable use because the previous owner had his work trucks here and ran a business just as we did. So I apologize for not knowing and believe me, I wish I wasn't in this situation. Um, and you know, I'm from this town and I've lived here for 15 years as well and we tried to build it the best we could to fit into the area and like John or Mike, um, said, many people said, what are you building out? Riding arena and everybody thinks that's what it was until they found out. I apologize, but I'm, I was just as shocked as you when we found out we couldn't do what we wanted to do after everything was issued. So I'm sorry.
I know that, um, Morgan Jackson, you had a couple of questions that you wanted to raise, so feel free, um, that will, if you're asking, you know.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yep.
I'm just sort of curious, um, you know, and I followed this project over the past nine, nine or 10 months and I realized the initial permit and, uh, Michael Tuie mentioned that it was issued for a commercial storage building for their business and I believe that's what the Belmontes thought they were building. And I just wanted clarification from the town as far as the zoning goes, if the initial building was issued for a commercial business or if it was issued for a residential pull bar?
Chair Bill Lewis?
Go ahead, Bill, if you'd like to.
Yes, uh, sir, it was issued as storage only. Um, I, I issued the actual permit. It took, it meets all the area involved requirements for the zone. Uh, the issue at hand is the special use, the use of the building. The building is in, is in character of that neighborhood and it does meet, like I said, the area involved. So it was issued as a storage building, uh, not a commercial storage, any storage building.
Okay. And I'm, I'm perfectly fine with Belmontes running a small tent business out of their property, but at the same point in time, from what I've read about this application and how this project has progressed over the past nine months, I have some concern that over the next two to three years, they're going to have 25 employees and 15 trucks running out of the property. You know, based on the application I read, it stated that there is one and a half full-time employees and it didn't state if they're on the property or off the property. And Michael mentioned that one was on the property and one was off the property. And then he also mentioned there were two drivers that could potentially be on the property, which is, I believe, in violation of the town code, having more than two full-time outside employees. Uh, like I said, you know, I, I don't know how we got here with a big building there and that's not my great. It's more of the fact that I don't want a small, large tent business running out of a property next door to mine with 40 or 50 trucks at some point over the next five years. And I just want to make sure that the town has the ability to put guardrails up to be able to control, you know, if the business grows, do they still have the ability to limit the amount of traffic and employees onsite? And then I guess the, the one other question which I didn't realize until actually, uh, John Romeo spoke up was I, I believe there, from what he said, there was a commercial dishwashing facility that is now also being run out of the facility to wash all the dishes. And I just wanted to make sure that it doesn't affect the groundwater I drink.
I would, I would say with respect to, um, the washing facility that's there to, basically, you're saying it's there as part of the, uh, dishwashing that would be associated with the rental, unrented that they sent, they ship out it and return back to the facility, uh, which I expect are the last additions, whether they've put in a septic system that the, uh, town has been inspecting in this, you know, so there's no overseeing on that. So, um, I, I know that Bill Lewis has been monitoring that and he's, it's going in. Uh, they had some issues that, that something's got backfilled. They actually had it uncovered again, so that, uh, the town was able to, you know, inspect the inspection was, and it's all, so. And with respect to the size of the septic system relatively closed, I believe that's met the, uh, criteria, correct, Bill?
That is correct, John.
So, uh, and as I look at the questions, I see Travis Fitzgerald, did you have a question? I'm going to try to find you and make sure I allow you to speak. Are you there Travis?
Yeah, I was just curious if they're going to be responsible for maintaining, uh, commercial insurance on that property, whether a commercial business is going to be in place?
Uh, that is really not a matter of the town. That's a matter of the Belmontes and their insurance.
We insure our tents. We have liability in case one blows over and, you know, on-site. Yeah, it's a commercial policy. I also insure my home because if a horse runs out on the street, I'm sure I'd be liable for that as well. So I have homeowners as well.
Anything else Travis? Does anyone else have, can you, your hands raised for, uh, Q and A's, put in? Bill Lewis, have you gotten any text messages to make a comment?
At this time, Chairman, no.
I guess one other question, John, I'm sorry to interrupt again.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Who actually determines once the business grows, if there's only going to be two full-time employees onsite? And how is that enforced?
Uh, that would be the building department.
Okay.
Here's this and then, uh, the planning board could require periodically that the special use permit be revisited if it is, you know, observed to the planning board, uh, periodically ask the Belmontes to come in and report back that they're still in compliance with the conditions in terms of the special use permit that was issued.
Okay. So once this permit is issued, it does have the ability to be pulled back if for whatever reason it's not in line with the town code?
Absolutely. Well, yeah, I mean, if it's not in line with the findings and conditions that it was issued, yes.
Mr. Chairman, may, may I say one thing too? Uh, you have, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, also the, the building will be subject to an annual fire and safety inspection, which at that time we will go through and do a, if, if the special use permits are granted, we'll, we'll, we'll do a commercial fire, uh, inspection and we can engage if the use of the building- And we can gauge if the use of the building has changed. The employees is going to be a tougher, a tougher thing to monitor, but hopefully we ask it.
Just to address Mr. Jackson's concerns, we've been in business for 15 years and we've had the same amount of staff pretty much for the 15 years. And we're not getting any younger and we're not looking to expand. And after this COVID, we may even be out of business.
I appreciate that Terry. I just, I noticed you acquired another tent company in Sarasota and that's what made me get a loan there just a few years ago.
In 2000, that's right, we did.
Yeah, no, I'm just a little concerned, like I said, small business, tent rental, perfectly fine with. I just don't want 40 trucks running out of there with any employees.
I don't want 40 trucks either.
You probably would, right? That's a great problem to have as a tent business, so.
But no, we got a lot of competition, but we're good, I think.
See another Q and A, Christine Cook.
Hello, can you hear me? Hi, my name's Christine Cook. I live on Oakwood Court and our property backs up to the Belmontes. My question was, is there a limit to how many trucks that you can have on site? And then how large are the trucks allowed to be?
We have, we have asked how many vehicles that they have and they've indicated to us that. And also about the screening of where they're parked. So I mean, there's a, there's a physical limit to the amount of parking that they have. And obviously if the word so quantity could put a limit on to, you know, the amount of trucks that can be stored outside and in.
Okay, yeah, it's just our concern is because we do, our property does back up to theirs. And what I'm concerned about is, you know, we do go out on our back property and we have a lot of wildlife. That if, we just don't want the excess noise that we would hear with, you know, loading and unloading trucks and such. And that's what we're concerned about with just hearing from our backside of our property.
Are there, I'm not seeing any other hands waved or Q and A prompts. Bill, do you have any texts coming in? Does the board have any questions at this point? Do you want us to bring it up?
I do that.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, Meg's hand was up first, so.
Oh, Meg, all right, go ahead Meg.
Hi.
Sorry, I'm looking at that.
I know, I understand. Okay, I have a question. If only two employees allowed, that are not members of the family allowed on site at the time, how do you manage that with the trucks? If you're loading a truck, does one person do all the loading? That's a lot of, and unloading? Or does the staff person who's there help with the loading?
No, the staff person would come in at nine o'clock on a normal, non-COVID day. She's had, you know, obviously we're not in business right now. The loaders, they come in, you know, earlier and get the trucks loaded or they may load them the night before when she's gone to get, to get the trucks out first thing in the morning. So that they get to their first stop, you know, they have, you know, a long day setting up tents. So they usually load them at night when the staff person's gone or come in before she gets here and they're gone before she comes in.
Okay, so you wouldn't be loading two, you wouldn't be loading two trucks at once then? You've made, you've scattered the trucks to make sure you.
My son, my husband would load one and then the other driver, you know, the other two employees would load another truck.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'm sorry everyone for my terrible lighting. So I'm sorry you can't see my face, it seems like. I just wanted to have some clarification. It seemed a little uncertain during Mr. Tuie's summary. Mrs. Belmonte or Mr. Belmonte, could one of you summarize who lives on the property and is also an employee? It just wasn't certain anymore what the case was.
My son and my, and my husband live on the property. My daughter-in-law lives on the property. My daughter lives on the property. I live on the property and my mother lives on the property. The only one that doesn't live on the property that's related is my other daughter.
That works for you, coffee?
In the summertime, if it's busy.
Okay. Any other two other employees that?
Don't live on the property. God, no.
Anybody else from the board at this point have a comment or question that they'd like to raise?
I've got one question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead Jim.
Is there a bathroom in the facility?
There is.
Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman.
What's that?
Um, the, the date I have is a little, is a little hushed on the plan I have. Do we have, the latest plan is 5/11/20? Or is it 5/5/20, or 5/5/20?
The latest site, huh?
Yeah, the latest site plan, excuse me, I should have been more clear.
Latest one I have is 5/11/20.
I just wanted to make sure, no we said that you're still working on the, Mr. Romano, you said you're still, or Romeo, you're still working on the revisions?
Yes, we, instead of submitting a plan for this meeting, then coming back with another plan at the next meeting, knowing that we have to include the stormwater measures, we decided to hold off on submitting just a plan that just showed some increased landscaping. And we will rather show a complete plan that shows the stormwater permits as well as the landscaping. Thank you.
And I would like to offer that, John, if you have any questions or you want to discuss this, we're happy to put up anything to discuss any of the comments that we had from last month with respect to screening or, or the stormwater that helps in terms of expeditions.
Thank you.
And I know we've went around a couple of times on the number of trucks. I just wanted to get an idea of how many trucks do you think will be permanently there? Or, or as permanent as overnight kind of trucks?
We have only permanently.
I'm sorry, it cut out on me.
Three trucks.
You have three? Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Board, I'm seeing.
Did you have a hand raised?
Okay, all right, John. I think I have you, John, Julie.
Thank you very much, board, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Just want to thank you, John, for hearing us this evening. And I just wanted to highlight one thing. Last time we all met together, I, those who were there, I want to remind you that your entire public seating section was, was full. It was a packed house. And when people raised their hand, who was there in opposition of the Belmontes who seemed to agree with these people, every hand was raised except for theirs. And I just want to remind you that besides the letter that was sent out was received today. Actually, I understand the situation, the current environment. But I think, I'm not sure how many of us are on tonight. But the kind words of Morgan and Jackson and others really reflect how we feel, including Nancy and in the, what the building looks like.
There are outstanding items we're waiting on, we continue to pursue this.
Sure, so a couple of things. The second I forward to the board, just a quick summary of the waiver and our position on that waiver. I think the board got it, it was probably at 5:30, I apologize for the latencies. We're waiting for Scott to make a simple update on his request. So in general, we, we would support the waiver should the board entertain it. That's based primarily on the fact that we are not relieving them of anything less than what the international fire code would require. So they're well within the limits of the fire code. And in parallel, A4s, Jason Miller of the Howery Department are in favor of making the town subdivision rates to coincide with the international fire code. Because that code is based on health and safety. That really would drive the length of certain things like roadways and secondary access. So I run it up to the board. So if the board was entertained that waiver, you have our engineering sort of look at it and our recognition on that problem. So to speak to other items that are sort of in the limbo, like Scott did provide an email update, I believe on Monday. Bigger items are rent and danger species survey, which they have done the survey. They have submitted it to U.S. Fish and Wildlife and we're waiting for some feedback. They also are dealing with cultural resources to the New York State Department, New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation. Those that has been done and they're waiting for some final review letters or sign offs from that, would expect that in short order. However, the, the fact that he has indicated and provided reasonable indication that he's in the pipeline with those two agencies, I would expect or anticipate some reasonable closeout probably in the next two to three weeks. Assuming all other technical aspects are addressed and the board is generally in favor of, of this application as it presents itself, we may be in a position to further craft seeker findings to deal with those two outstanding items based on the information that Scott has furnished the board. But I think that's really the, the things that are sort of outstanding as, as a way at this moment with this application.
I think the only other one was the water?
Yeah, the water district, I think there was, it's, it's not a matter of, and the water, I think it's, it's in the town's court of how that mechanism will be set up. They have requested of the town board the ability to do an auto district user agreement with the village. The other option is, is the town actually forms a water district. It's really the structure, it doesn't change at this moment how they get the water. It just changes the structure on which the water district or the water service areas are. So I think if come the planning board meeting where the public hearing is scheduled, that is still in flux, I think that that can be appropriately worded and a seeker finding statement so that it does uphold that if the board was going to choose to act on that approach.
And then the last thing we're waiting for is just the county referral coming in. The county indicated the ones additional information was to have. They're meeting actually tomorrow, so we should get the county referral. So, so I.
John, real quick, just so I recall, it's incredible, while the counties, I think that the issues that they raised didn't necessarily have to do with traffic volume and had to do with engineering design of the two entrances on Rollins Street.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So I don't think the.
I think, I think those have been addressed, I just, we had the.
Right, and I didn't think of. Need to deal with the county department of urban works to resolve these issues so it doesn't play their role.
Okay, we should hear tomorrow.
Yeah, I would anticipate that, yeah.
So tonight, I think I want to consider, the first, I would entertain and consider a motion to grant the waiver pursuant to section 154, 1933 regarding two entrances on a subdivision of 20 or more lots.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, where's the guy now? Do I have a second?
I'll take that again.
All right, and then any discussion, any questions that would happen there?
Well, shouldn't, shouldn't we make our, shouldn't we make our waiver subject to 30? 30 lots?
Oh, so, you know, I thought I quickly summarized it, but I will, I'll take, here's what the resolution said.
I just don't want to waive the whole, the whole thing and then.
No, no, it's not, it's one couple of things. So it's, it's, as is within it, pursuant to section 154, 28 of the town code, the applicant and its representative have requested a waiver of the specific requirements in one, section 144, 1933. International Fire Code has a standard of 30 or more lots requiring these two connections with the streets. Whereas the applicant and its representative have requested that any subdivision of the law for the subdivision access to the rest of Rollins Street. Where we are then resolving that number one, the applicant's written request came to us June 16, 2020, requesting a grant of relief to mitigate the specific hardship. Public entrance will be protected within the standards of the international fire code and the development is in keeping with the general script and intent of the regulation and other town regulations. So we are granting it for the international code for 30 residences.
Thank you.
And I would add that it's at the strong urgency of the highway department that we're going to add to the subdivision regulations. Exactly, this is apparently not the first time they've done this. They would like that reconciled, so that has been given to the town. So with that, any further discussion? Now, Chairman, we're both.
Mr. Arcevada?
Yes.
Ms. Pedua?
Yes.
Ms. Berlinta?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Willow?
Yes.
David Roberto?
Yes.
And then secondly, assuming that everything gets into us on time, I think Joel and I have kind of, kind of had Scott Lansing on this. He thinks it's going to get everything into us by July 1st. So I'd like to get this to public comment and a public hearing. So I'd like to entertain and consider a resolution to schedule a public hearing on the Rollins Street major subdivision condition on receiving required information by the quarter business July 1st. First, and we will schedule that hearing for 7:15 PM.
On July 15th?
15th.
Well, then I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll say it then.
Any discussion? For the board?
Mr. Berzak?
Yes.
Ms. Pedua?
Yes.
Ms. Vandenta?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Willow?
Yes.
David Roberto?
Yes.
And I just saw that he said at 7:15.
Yes, so the way it works out, we have the Belmonte a special use permit at 7:05. We have the road subdivision at 7:10. And now the Rollins Street subdivision at 7:15.
Okay.
Obviously, the times will probably spread, but.
Okay.
Let's sequence that. And I will get you a copy of the resolution on the waiver tomorrow morning so you can file it. Any other business to be brought before the board? Any other comments from staff or anybody?
Mr. Chairman, I just note, I think on this application, you may have attendees. And I, I don't know if the attendees intended to speak.
I do not see anybody as an attendee. Analyst? No, I don't see anybody representing the application. Mr. Lansing is not on, wasn't missing that open Q and A here.
If you, I've been, I'm not suggesting that mine is the only accurate, I mean, maybe it's not. But I show four attendees, Milton Watch, Douglas Flynn, YSL.
Oh, so yes, so, yeah, so YSL is.
Yeah, I believe Douglas Flynn is from Lansing Engineering as well.
Okay, I'll ask Scott, I'll ask Doug. Okay, uh, I'll ask Scott, then I'll ask Douglas. Do you have, here you go. Do you guys have anything you want to say?
Uh, hello, this is Scott Lansing. Actually, the invitation was sent to Doug Flynn. So that's why it uh solicited us Doug Flynn. But we do not have anything to add. I do appreciate the board's consideration of the, uh, the waiver and approval of that. And uh, we look forward to seeing you guys next month in a public hearing. Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything else? If not, I thank everyone again and for your patience. I know this is a little bit awkward. I hope you've been listening. Uh, if there were no late texts coming in with questions, did you get anything?
No, none at this time, Chairman.
Okay. Well, with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Rick Stevens?
I'll say it then.
John Will, all those signify by saying hi?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you again, everyone, for your patience and your diligence as seen by Zoom. Do keep your eyes open and I'll keep forward informed if there's some change to our format in meeting in July. Uh, and keep that, everybody enjoy the first days of summer.
Thank you. Everybody take care. Bye.